Good evening, and welcome to the June City Council meeting. The meeting will come to order, and the court will call the roll.
Councilmember Clifford?
Here.
Councilmember Conklin?
Here.
Councilmember Hague?
Here.
Councilmember McFadden?
Here.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Here.
Councilmember Patterson?
Here.
Councilmember Spahl?
Here.
Vice President Miller?
Here.
President Scott?
Here. Council, please rise for a moment of silence. Vice President Miller, please lead us into the next question.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and its republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now for the retirement recognition ceremonies. Would Russell Merritt please come to the podium along with Councilmember McFadden, Mayor Warren, and Chief Schreiber? We're a Chief Schreiber look-alike. Okay. We send him best wishes. Now we have the approval of the minutes by Councilmember Spahl.
Thank you. Resolve that the minutes of the regular meeting of May 23, 2017 be approved as published in the official sheets of the proceedings.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries nine zero.
The following documents are hereby directed to be received and filed. The mayor submits the following quarterly reports, professional service agreements less than or equal to $10,000. The council submits disclosure of interest forms from Councilmember Clifford on introductory number 181, Councilmember Hague on introductory number 208, and introductory number 214, and Councilmember Spahl on introductory number 180, introductory number 183, introductory number 204, and introductory number 214.
It's time for the presentation and reference of petitions and any other communications. Are there any petitions?
President Scott, I have 100 signatures in opposition to the Rochester Management Cobbs Hill Park project.
President Scott, I have a petition signed by 42 professional taxi drivers relating to Uber and Lyft.
President Scott, I have 1,300 signatures from a variety of communities across Western New York in support of the Cobbs Hill Village plan as outlined by Rochester Management.
Thank you. Those petitions will be received and filed. Now let's move to the reports of the standing committees. Councilmember Conklin, the Finance Committee report, please.
Thank you, President Scott. The Finance Committee recommends for adoption the following entitled legislation. introductory number 180, authorizing an agreement for the 2017 KeyBank Rochester Fringe Festival; introductory number 181, authorizing a mandatory agreement with Personal Energy, Inc., related to the development and administration of a physical agility test; introductory number 220, authorizing an agreement with Entrez Computer Services related to the upgrade of Microsoft Access Systems; introductory number 222, resolution approving the 2017-18 debt limit for general municipal purposes; introductory number 224, levying taxes for municipal purposes for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2017, and expiring June 30, 2018; introductory number 225, confirming the assessments, amounts, and charges to be inserted in the annual tax rolls for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2017, and expiring June 30, 2018; introductory number 226, levying taxes for school purposes for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2017, and expiring June 30, 2018; introductory number 227, local improvement ordinance, street cleaning, street and sidewalks no removal, and hazardous sidewalk repair commencing July 1, 2017, and expiring June 30, 2018; introductory number 228, amending the municipal code with respect to designated parking garages and parking rates; introductory number 229, amending the municipal code with respect to water rates; introductory number 230, amending the municipal code with respect to refuse fees; introductory number 231, local law amending the city charter with regard to fees and actions for foreclosure of tax liens by the city; introductory number 232, amending the municipal code with respect to towing fees. The Finance Committee recommends for consideration the following entitled legislation. introductory number 223, adoption of the budget estimates for municipal purposes for the 2017-18 fiscal year, appropriation of sums set forth therein, and approving commercial refuse fees; introductory number 233, adoption of the budget estimates for school purposes for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2017, expiring June 30, 2018, and appropriation of sums set forth therein. Respectfully submitted, Molly Clifford, Adam McFadden, Dana Miller, Loretta C. Scott, and myself, Carol A. Conklin. I should also like to mention that I will move to discharge introductory number 300, which is amending Chapter 63 of the municipal code with regard to housing discrimination on the board basis of source of income.
Thank you, Councilmember Conklin. That report will be received, filed, and published, and we'll proceed with the vote. introductory number 180, legislation for the 2017 KeyBank Rochester Fringe Festival. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries nine zero. introductory number 181, legislation for an amendsatory agreement with Personal Energy. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries nine zero. introductory number 220, legislation for an agreement with Entrez Computer Services, Inc. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries nine zero. introductory number 222, a resolution approving the 2017-18 debt limit for municipal purposes. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries nine zero. introductory number 223, legislation adopting the budget estimates for municipal purposes for the 2017-18 fiscal year, and approving commercial refuse fees. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries nine zero. introductory number 224, legislation for levying taxes for municipal purposes for the 2017-18 fiscal year. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries nine zero. introductory number 225, legislation confirming the assessments and charges for the annual tax rolls for fiscal year 2017-18. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries nine zero. introductory number 226, legislation for levying taxes for school purposes for the 2017-18 fiscal year. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion carries eight one zero. introductory number 227 is a local improvement ordinance for street cleaning, street and sidewalks no removal, and hazardous sidewalk repair for the 2017-18 fiscal year. This requires a roll call.
Councilmember Clifford?
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin?
Yes.
Councilmember Hague?
Yes.
Councilmember McFadden?
See.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Spahl?
Yes.
Vice President Miller?
Yes.
President Scott?
Yes. Motion carries nine zero. introductory number 228, legislation amending the municipal code with respect to parking rates. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries nine zero. introductory number 229, legislation amending the municipal code with respect to water rates. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries nine zero. introductory number 230, legislation amending the municipal code with respect to refuse fees. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries nine zero. introductory number 231, a local law amending the city charter with regard to fees and actions for foreclosure of tax liens by the city. This requires a roll call.
Councilmember Clifford?
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin?
Yes.
Councilmember Hague?
Yes.
Councilmember McFadden?
See.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Spahl?
Yes.
Vice President Miller?
Yes.
President Scott?
Yes. Motion carries nine zero. introductory number 232, legislation amending the municipal code with respect to towing fees. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries nine zero. introductory number 223, legislation adopting the budget estimates for school purposes for the 2017-18 fiscal year. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
President Scott?
Yes. And I'm not going to make any lengthy speech. My first vote on council 12 years ago was against the budget for the school district. My last vote is against the budget for a school district. I detailed all my reasons in a memo that anybody is willing to have a copy of. I vote no.
Thank you. Motion carries eight one zero. Councilmember Conklin, do you have a motion for introductory number 300, the prohibition of housing discrimination based on source of income?
I do, President Scott. I would move to discharge introductory number 300, which is amending Chapter 63 of the municipal code with regard to housing discrimination on the basis of source of income.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of discharging introductory number 300 from committee, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries nine zero. Before we vote on introductory number 300, Councilmember McFadden, do you have any comments that you'd like to make?
Yes, Madam President. For those who may be confused about why we're doing this, I would just suggest that you open a renter's guide in our county. You open it up, and you see discrimination based on source of income. An apartment or a house will be offered, and at the end of the listing, it will say, "No DSS, no Section 8, accepted." They make a determination about people by where the money is coming from and not by the person, their rental history, their character, or their upbringing. I just find that to be totally offensive. I think if we're going to talk about deconcentrating poverty, we have to get rid of these rules that allow people to concentrate poverty into areas. And, you know, we've been able to have a public hearing. We've met with the state. We met with the Rochester Housing Authority. We met, hearing the concerns of landlords. And I understand some of the complaints about broken systems as to why people might have some reservations about this. But if you look at our history in this country, when the 13th Amendment freed slaves, there were people saying, "Not now. There are no systems that can catch them. There's nothing available to them. Why would we do this now? Wait." Well, we freed people. We were promised 40 acres and a mule. That never came. But I would tell you this, I can't find an African American who'd say, "Well, because I didn't get 40 acres and a mule, could you please put me back into slavery?" You look at what happened with the Civil Rights Act of 1965. There were people saying, "We need to keep these laws on the books that allowed states to come up with poll tax and all of these ridiculous rules as to voting." There were people telling us that we weren't ready to make that change. We made the change, and now people are able to vote without those rules. We're going a little bit backwards on that, but I would say you can't find people saying, "Hey, that was a great thing, let's return it." And so those things may seem extreme to some. And so, those things may seem extreme to some, but I would tell you, people who live in poverty, that is a real case for them every day if they have to find a place to live in this city. And I'm very concerned, not only about that, but the prices of rental property in our city as well. We cannot claim to be a progressive city allowing these backwards things to happen to our most vulnerable population in our community. That's why I'm supporting it, and I would, you know, ask for all of my colleagues to get behind it. So thank you for giving me this opportunity to explain why I'm, I'm taking the position I am.
Thank you, Councilmember McFadden. Councilmember Patterson?
Thank you. There are times in life when we get to choose to do the easy thing or the hard thing. On its face, voting in favor of introductory 300 entitled Municipal Code Amendment, prohibition of housing discrimination based on source of income, seems to be the easy thing to do. Who's in favor of discrimination? Landlords are bad, and everything they do is wrong. Again, an easy yes, vote. My problems are these. The legislation recognizes a problem whose solution is beyond the scope of this body to solve, and it offers remedies for the problem with negative impacts for landlords and low-income rental applicants alike. Given the testimony of a group of landlords at a recent public hearing, I can live with the negative impact on landlords, but I can't vote for legislation that will negatively impact low-income rental applicants, no matter how well-meaning. If enacted, the amendment will make it unlawful for landlords to let low-income rental applicants know that they will not accept payments from Section 8, unemployment insurance, and county social services, among other sources. If the amendment applied to Section 8 and other sources of income while excluding counties, county social services and unemployment, I would support it. Yet regardless of the amounts provided by a prospective tenant from unemployment insurance or Department of Social Services, the temporary nature of these two programs makes their source unreliable. This is particularly true for Department of Social Services. Because of its temporary nature and local administration, it is exceptionally unreliable as a source of income. So much so that it drives great, it drives a great deal of evictions in our city and contributes, unfortunately, to homelessness in our community. There are some landlords who are willing to work with these programs. There are others who are not, and they let prospective tenants know ahead of time that they are not willing to work with these sources of income. That notification is precluded by this amendment. If enacted, the end result will be that low-income renters will find it that much harder to find affordable housing in the city of Rochester, which is where the majority of affordable housing is located and closing. The easy vote is yes, and it sounds good, and it will harm low-income rental applicants. The hard vote is no, and that no is against an amendment that makes it harder for low-income rental applicants to find affordable housing in the city of Rochester. I will vote no.
Okay. Now we'll proceed with the vote. All in favor of introductory number 300, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries eight one zero. Vice President Miller, the Business and Economic Development Committee report, please.
Thank you, Madam President. The Business and Economic Development Committee recommends for adoption the following entitled legislation. introductory number 183, authorizing the sale of vacant land on a portion of 83 Mortimer Street. The following entitled legislation is being held in committee. introductory number 182, authorizing the sale of land parcel at 270 East Avenue. This report is respectfully submitted by Councilmembers Michael A. Patterson, Elaine M. Spahl, Council President Loretta C. Scott, and myself, Council Vice President Dana K. Miller.
Thank you, Vice President Miller. That report will be received, filed, and published, and we'll proceed with the vote. introductory number 183, legislation approving the sale of vacant land on a portion of 83 Mortimer Street. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
President Scott abstained.
Motion carries eight zero one. President Miller, Vice President Miller, do you have a motion for introductory number 182?
Yes, Madam President, I do. I would like to make a motion to discharge introductory number 182 from committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of discharging introductory number 182 from committee, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries nine zero. Now let's vote on introductory number 182. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries nine zero. Councilmember Ortiz, the Neighborhood and Community Development Committee report, please.
The Neighborhood and Community Development Committee recommends for adoption the following entitled legislation. introductory number 184, authorizing the sale of real estate. introductory number 186, authorizing a professional services agreement for the zombie and vacant property remediation and prevention initiative. introductory number 187, authorizing an ammendatory agreement with the Center for Dispute Settlement Incorporated for the city's housing and rehabilitation and repair programs. introductory number 221, authorizing an intermunicipal agreement with Monroe County for lead paint poisoning prevention inspection services. the Neighborhood and Community Development Committee recommends for consideration the following entitled legislation. introductory number 185, amending the zoning code text for the planned development district number seven, Rochester Science Park. introductory number 218, a local law amending the city charter with respect to the organization of the Department of Neighborhood and Business Development. introductory number 219, amending the municipal code with respect to the organization of the Department of Neighborhood and Business Development. The following entitled legislation is being held in committee by referral to the zoning director for review by the Planning Commission. introductory number 188, amending the zoning code, Chapter 120 of the Municipal Code with regard to notification requirements for information meetings and public hearings. This report is respectfully submitted by Councilmembers Molly Clifford, Carol A. Conklin, Vice President Dana K. Miller, President Loretta C. Scott, and myself, Jacqueline Ortiz.
Thank you, Councilmember Ortiz. That report will be received, filed, and published, and we'll proceed with the vote. introductory number 184, legislation approving the sale of eight properties. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries nine zero. introductory number 185, legislation for a zoning code text amendment for the planned development district number seven, Rochester Science Park. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries nine zero. introductory number 186, legislation for the zombie and vacant property remediation and prevention initiative. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries nine zero. introductory number 187, legislation for an ammendatory agreement with the Center for Dispute Settlement for the city's housing rehabilitation and repair program. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries nine zero. introductory number 218, a local law amending the city charter with respect to the organization of the Department of Neighborhood and Business Development. This requires a roll call.
Councilmember Clifford?
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin?
Yes.
Councilmember Hague?
Yes.
Councilmember McFadden?
See.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Spahl?
Yes.
Vice President Miller?
Yes.
President Scott?
Yes. Motion carries nine zero. Councilmember Ortiz, do you have a motion for introductory number 219, legislation amending the municipal code with respect to the organization of the Department of Neighborhood and Business Development?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to amend introductory number 219, adding sections that were inadvertently omitted from the current code.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Now let's vote on introductory number 219 as amended. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries nine zero. introductory number 221, legislation for a municipal agreement with Monroe County for lead paint poisoning prevention inspection services. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries nine zero. Councilmember Hague, the Parks Public, Parks and Public Works Committee report, please.
Thank you, President Scott. The Parks and Public Works Committee recommends for adoption the following entitled legislation. introductory number 189, appropriating funds and authorizing agreements for the 2017 Preventive Maintenance Contract Number Four Project. introductory number 190, appropriating funds and authorizing agreements for the 2017 Preventive Maintenance Contract Number Four Project. introductory number 191, a bond ordinance of the city of Rochester, New York, authorizing the issuance of $100,000 bonds of said city to finance the reconstruction of certain portions of Cleveland Street, Draper Street, Central Park, Merchants Road, and Browncroft Boulevard related to the 2017 Preventive Maintenance Contract Number Four Project. introductory number 192, appropriating funds for the 2016 Preventive Maintenance Contract Two Street Project. introductory number 193, appropriating funds for the 2016 Preventive Maintenance Contract Two Street Project. introductory number 195, authorizing an agreement with LaBella Associates, DPC, for bridge and structural engineering services. introductory number 196, authorizing an ammendatory agreement for the Charlotte Street and Hags Alley Improvement Project. introductory number 197, amending the authorization of a series, I'm sorry, amending the authorization of a services agreement with the New York State Power Authority for the Five Cities Energy Plan Program. introductory number 198, appropriating funds and authorizing an agreement for the Dewey Avenue Driving Park Avenue Intersection Realignment Project. introductory number 199, a bond ordinance of the city of Rochester, New York, authorizing the issuance of $428,000 bonds of said city to finance a portion of the cost of the street reconstruction of the Dewey Avenue Driving Park Avenue Intersection Realignment Project. introductory number 200, a bond ordinance of the city of Rochester, New York, authorizing the issuance of $463,000 bonds of said city to finance a portion of the cost of a water main replacement for the Dewey Avenue Driving Park Avenue Intersection Realignment Project. introductory number 201, authorizing agreement for the Flower City Park and Parkdale Terrace curb replacement project. introductory number 202, a bond ordinance of the city of Rochester, New York, authorizing the issuance of $555,300 bonds of said city to finance the street improvements related to the Flower City Park and Parkdale Terrace curb replacement project. introductory number 203, a bond ordinance of the city of Rochester, New York, authorizing the issuance of $102,000 bonds of said city to finance water pertinence adjustments and catch basin replacements along Flower City Park and Parkdale Terrace related to the 2017 Flower City Park and Parkdale Terrace curb replacement project. introductory number 204, authorizing an agreement for the Rochester Riverside Convention Center Escalator Assessment as amended. introductory number 205, authorizing agreements for the Mount Hope Avenue Phase Two Improvement Project. introductory number 206, a bond ordinance of the city of Rochester, New York, authorizing the issuance, issuance of $1,880,000 bonds of said city to finance the milling and resurfacing of certain portions of Market View Heights Streets related to the 2017 Market View Heights Residential Milling and Resurfacing Program Project. introductory number 207, authorizing an ammendatory agreement with Stan Tech Consulting Services, Inc., for the Ridgeway Avenue Transportation Improvement Project. introductory number 208, authorizing agreements and funding for the Shared Mobility Program. introductory number 209, authorizing an application to New York State for funding of water quality infrastructure projects. introductory number 210, authorizing an agreement with New York State Department of Environmental Conservation for the disposition of electronic waste material. introductory number 211, authorizing a project participation agreement and funding to repair or support column at 99 Court Street. The following entitled legislation is being held in committee. introductory number 194, approving geometric changes related to the Atlantic Avenue at Merriman Street Safety Improvements. This report is respectfully submitted by Councilmembers Michael A. Patterson, Elaine M. Spahl, Council Vice President Dana K. Miller, Council President Loretta C. Scott, and myself, Councilmember Matt Hague.
Thank you, Councilmember Hague. That report will be received, filed, and published, and we'll proceed with the vote. introductory number 189, legislation for an agreement with Lou Engineers for the 2017 Preventive Maintenance Contract Number Four Project. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries nine zero.
Council President, the administration is respectfully requesting that introductory number 190, there be a motion to refer it back to committee. For 190, for there to be a motion for it to be returned to committee.
So we will move to return 192 to committee?
There's a second? So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So 190 is returned to committee. introductory number 191 is the bond ordinance to finance the preventive maintenance contract number four project. This requires a roll call.
Councilmember Clifford?
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin?
Yes.
Councilmember Hague?
Yes.
Councilmember McFadden?
See.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Spahl?
Yes.
Vice President Miller?
Yes.
President Scott?
Yes. Motion carries nine zero. Councilmember Hague, do you have a motion for introductory number 192?
I do, President Scott. I, I'd like to make a motion to refer introductory number 192 back to committee. introductory number 192 and introductory number 193 are actually duplicate items, and introductory 193 has the text clarifying, clarifying the meaning of a strikeout and underline.
That was clear. All in favor of returning 192 back to committee, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries nine zero. introductory number 193, legislation for the 2016 Preventive Maintenance Contract Number Two Street Project. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries nine zero. introductory number 195, legislation for an agreement with LaBella Associates for Bridge and Structural Engineering Services. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries nine zero. introductory number 196, legislation for the Charlotte Street and Hags Alley Improvement Project. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries nine zero. introductory number 197, legislation amending ordinance number 2015 dash 231 for funding for the energy analyst. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries nine zero. introductory number 198, legislation for the Dewey Avenue Driving Park Avenue Intersection Realignment Project. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries nine zero. introductory number 199, a bond ordinance to fund the street reconstruction costs of the Dewey Avenue Driving Park Avenue Intersection Alignment, Realignment Project. This requires a roll call.
Councilmember Clifford?
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin?
Yes.
Councilmember Hague?
Yes.
Councilmember McFadden?
See.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Spahl?
Yes.
Vice President Miller?
Yes.
President Scott?
Yes. Motion carries nine zero. introductory number 200, a bond ordinance to fund the water main replacements cost of the Dewey Avenue Park Avenue Driving Park Avenue Intersection Realignment Project. This requires a roll call.
Councilmember Clifford?
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin?
Yes.
Councilmember Hague? Councilmember Hague?
Yes.
Councilmember McFadden?
C.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Spall?
Yes.
Vice President Miller?
Yes.
President Scott?
Yes. Motion carries nine, zero. Introductory number two zero one, legislation for the Flower City Park and Parkdale Terrace curb replacement project. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries nine, zero. Introductory number two zero two, a bond ordinance to fund the street improvements for the Flower City Park and Parkdale Terrace curb replacement project. This requires a roll call.
Councilmember Clifford?
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin?
Yes.
Councilmember Hague?
Yes.
Councilmember McFadden?
C.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Spall?
Yes.
Vice President Miller?
Yes.
President Scott?
Yes. Motion carries nine, zero. Introductory number two zero three, a bond ordinance to fund water improvements for the Flower City Park and Parkdale Terrace curb replacement project. This requires a roll call.
Councilmember Clifford?
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin?
Yes.
Councilmember Hague?
Yes.
Councilmember McFadden?
C.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Spall?
Yes.
Vice President Miller?
Yes.
President Scott?
Yes. Motion carries nine, zero. Introductory number two zero four, as amended, legislation for the Rochester Riverside Convention Center Escalator Assessment Project. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries nine, zero. Introductory number two zero five, legislation for the Mount Hope Avenue Phase Two Improvements Project. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries nine, zero. Introductory number two zero six, a bond ordinance to fund the Mount Hope Avenue Phase Two Improvement Project. This requires a roll call.
Councilmember Clifford?
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin?
Yes.
Councilmember Hague?
Yes.
Councilmember McFadden?
C.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Spall?
Yes.
Vice President Miller?
Yes.
President Scott?
Yes. Motion carries nine, zero. Introductory number two zero seven, legislation for the Ridgeway Transportation Improvement Project. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries nine, zero. Introductory number two zero eight, legislation for the Shared Mobility Program. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries nine, zero. Introductory number two zero nine, legislation for a grant application to New York State for water improvement projects. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries nine, zero. Introductory number two ten, legislation for a grant from New York State for the disposition of electronic waste. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries nine, zero. Councilmember Hague, do you have a motion for introductory number two eleven, legislation for column support repairs at ninety-nine Court Street?
I do, President Scott. I'd like to amend introductory number two eleven, adding the Dinosaur Restaurants LLC as a party to the agreement.
All in favor of amending introductory?
Second.
I'm sorry, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of amending introductory number two eleven, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries nine, zero. Now, let's vote on introductory number two eleven as amended. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries nine, zero. Councilmember McFadden, the Public Safety, Youth, and Recreation Committee report, please.
Madam President, members of the council, the Public Safety, Youth, and Recreation Committee recommends for adoption the following entitled legislation. Introductory item number two twelve, authorizing an agreement with the Center for Governmental Research, Inc. to study the process and performance of the Civilian Review Board. Introductory item number two thirteen, authorizing a professional services agreement for skate park design and grant seeking. Introductory item number two fourteen, authorizing agreements for the Teenage Pregnancy Prevention Program. Introductory item number two fifteen, authorizing an equipment funding agreement for the Police Department. And introductory item number two sixteen, authorizing agreements and appropriating funds for veterinary services. This report was respectfully submitted by Councilmember Molly Clifford, Councilmember Matt Hague, Council Vice President Dana K. Miller, Council President Loretta Scott, and myself, Councilmember Adam McFadden.
Mayor Warren, did you wish to be recognized or? Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember McFadden. That report will be received, filed, and published, and we'll proceed with the vote. Introductory number two twelve, legislation for an agreement with the Center for Governmental Research. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries nine, zero. Introductory number two thirteen, legislation for an agreement with Stan Tech Consulting Services for skate park design and fundraising. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries nine, zero. Introductory number two fourteen, legislation for the federal teenage pregnancy prevention grant. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
President Scott, I'm going to abstain. Thank you.
Motion carries eight, zero, one. Introductory number two fifteen, legislation for an agreement with the Federal Bureau of Investigation for Equipment Reimbursement. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries nine, zero. Introductory number two sixteen, legislation for veterinary services for Rochester Animal Services. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries nine, zero. Is there any miscellaneous business to come before City Council? Mayor Warren?
Yes, Madam President, thank you for recognizing me. I want to thank City Council, especially City Councilmember Carolie Conklin, for all of her support during this year's budget and for all the budgets. I've served with her for almost ten years now, and I can tell you that next year is not going to be the same without her. But I want to thank Council for passing the two thousand seventeen, eighteen budget. It is a budget that affirms our commitment to our employees, the citizens of Rochester, and our taxpayers. For the second year in a row, we have lower property taxes for the typical homeowner. We have the second lowest non-homestead and the lowest homestead rate for our taxpayers since two thousand and one, and we have continued our commitment to our officers, firefighters, children, and families. In the last three and a half years, this administration has brought an unprecedented amount of grants annually to the city to the tune of over seventy-five million dollars, and we are thankful for your support in allowing us to do that.